I'd like to call an order at the meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education. It is Tuesday, May 16th, at approximately two minutes after 5:00 PM. And I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Nelson County Board of Education, representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children, pledges to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting visionary directions through effective policy, oversight, and efficient resource management. Quality education now, learning for life. First on the agenda, Dr. Orville, changes.
No changes to the agenda.
Okay, then next up is our students' stakeholder engagements. Do we have ones?
Have some fine young folks from Nelson County High School. And we have Ms. Robinson here. We'd like to make introductions. We'd like you to do that.
My students and I would love to share with you our state song, "Old Kentucky Home", by Stephen Foster. If you'd care to stand while we perform it or sing along with us, we'd love to invite you to. The sun shines bright on my old Kentucky home. 'Tis summer, the people are gay. The corn tops ripe and the men are in the blue. While the birds make music all the day. The young folks roll on the little cabin floor. All merry, all happy and bright. By my heart, times comes a knocking at my door. Then my old Kentucky home, good night. Weep no more, my lady. Oh, weep no more today. We will sing one song for my old Kentucky home. For my old Kentucky home, far away. Hi. Do I need to stand here or do I go to the mic? Or...
Good news. Over to the...
Okay. Hi. My name is Carly Davis, and I will be reading the good news for today. As of May 2017, Bloomfield Elementary students enjoyed Derby Day preparations with a horse race. And to top off the excitement, students in grades three through five celebrated with a K-Craft kickoff assembly in the gym to get students motivated to do their very best. Staff and students also celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week with different catered breakfast and lunch items that the PBGE hosted. Bloomfield Middle School archery team competed at Nationals on May 11th. The Beta Club will compete at Nationals this summer. Carson Mattingly, current JR State Beta chaplain, will be running for national office. Boston held the first annual Quiver Coral, where student archers competed against parents and staff. The students received the victory for this year. The month of April was full of awesome April Friday events, including a Quiz Bowl match between teachers and students, a game of Hungry Hippos Live, and a morning talent show. Foster Heights students, staff, and families synergized to beautify the school recently by planting new flowers and plants in many different areas. The support shown by the community and the hard work by students and staff was amazing. The Nelson County Early Learning Center has been preparing the school and the students for next year. Please continue to spread the word that Nelson County Early Learning Center is always enrolling throughout the year. Six FBLA students will represent Nelson County High School at national competition. Tess Wilson from New Haven School was awarded the Nelson County Special Education Teacher of the Year through CKE-SE. Mrs. Hash's first grade class was the only class in Kentucky to have every student ready for second grade on the Lexia program. The Old Kentucky Home Middle School archery team competed at Nationals this last weekend. Ryan Haff finished in the top 7% of all eighth grade boys, and Alex Kreider finished in the top 4% of all seventh grade girls. Thomas Nelson High School, class of 2020, students participated in an important community collaboration project. Students visited all parts of the county to explore the human geography of Nelson County.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
And then moving into our respect of best recognition.
Each month, we recognize four individuals for going above and beyond the call of duty. So I will read from their nominations, and then after I read through all four of those, we'll ask you individuals to come forward and make a small presentation of our appreciation. First of all, from Bloomfield Elementary School, Dana Whiteus is our certified staff member who switched from kindergarten to third grade this year, but no one would have known unless you were told. She is kind and loving to the children. She pushes them to learn. The nominator's daughter had been at a standstill, and it was this year that her third-grade teachers pushed her to move past that block she experienced. As a parent, this person says, "I work hard, but if I email this Whiteus late in the evening, she will respond that evening." She definitely goes above and beyond for students and parents. Our classified staff member is Jennifer Vermaat, who drives bus 1274. Jennifer knows each and every one of the students on her bus, not just by name, but by their likes and dislikes. She believes the students on the bus are her own kids and treats them that way. She interacts with students on a personal level, treats every student, staff member, with respect, and genuinely cares for each student she encounters. I'm so glad to work alongside such a remarkably kind and genuinely caring person. And that nomination was from the principal. Our parent this evening is Ashley Nix from the Boston School. Ashley has been our PTA treasurer for the past three years and served our school through this role and many others. She is a frequent volunteer at school events and readily gives her time and talents to the students and staff at Boston School. That was also nominated by the Boston School principal. And then our fourth person, our student, is Mariana Galvan from Bloomfield Middle School. And one of her teachers says, "I've never met any student with such a positive outlook as Mariana. Every day, she's ready to learn with optimism and an open mind. Her positivity flows into her studies, and you can see her passion for her students. Mariana is an outstanding saxophone player, and she received a distinguished rating at KMEA solo and ensemble competition. Her dedication to her studies truly represents the Blazer Way." So if those four individuals are here, I haven't had a chance to see if everybody's here, but if you'll come forward, we'd like to make a presentation.
All right, moving along. Next on the agenda is our operations consent agenda, and this consists of several documents that were sent to us through email to review. And so I'll need a motion to approve the operations consent agenda as listed. Motion. Ms. Berry made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Jackie, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is our Efficient Resource Management, and first on that list is our tentative budget. Mr. Parkinson.
Good evening. Each year in May, we bring to the board the tentative budget. It's Kentucky. We have a budget schedule for public schools that begins in January. It's draft. In May, we bring a tentative budget. Obviously, in July, typically, we approve the previous year's annual financial report, and then the final working budget we approve in September. So we're... It's the time of year for the tentative budget. I'm going to go through this. We talked about this to some degree at the work session a couple of weeks ago. I've highlighted a few fields that I think you'll have interest in, and we're just going to go through those fields. We're looking at page one on the screen. I'm assuming you have it on your device in front of you. The top number to the right there in yellow, $2,400,000. Is everyone with me? Sorry, I talk too fast sometimes. Let me know when you're there. Proceed. I'm on page one. Ready to go? Okay. Far right column is the column we're focused on. That's the next-year budget column. And you see that we're projecting the general fund beginning balance, unobligated, unreserved beginning balance, to be $2.4 million, which is an increase over the current year's beginning balance, which is not a surprise. We've been talking about that as we've gone through the year. We've expected that. The next section of the budget is the revenues, the first highlighted field there. I'll use my toy here. Go back to the previous page, Carla, if you don't mind. You can see there the next highlighted field is you're adding the lawn taxes, property tax levying. And we don't do that until August, but obviously, we have to adopt a budget in May, so we have to assume what might happen. That's what we're doing here. We're showing $515,000 in additional revenue locally. Now, there's some things that affect that, that are beyond our control. So obviously, you do have control over that final rate that will levy, and hopefully be discussing that when August rolls around. The next highlighted field I have on the screen here is new to us. We've talked about it, I think, but there've been a lot of warehouses by the Steel Spirits providers here in Nelson County that you've seen pop up over the last couple of years. And we were asked to sign off on an agreement, an industrial revenue bond agreement with various of those folks, in order to get those warehouses in Nelson County, to keep jobs coming to Nelson County. We did that, and as a result of that, Jim Bean has pledged to provide $5,000 in revenue and lieu payments to the school district. And we'll receive some money this year. We feel like that that's going to be based on six warehouses in fiscal '18, so we're going to receive $30,000 in fiscal '18 that you've not gotten previously. Does that make sense to everyone?
So that was $5,000 per warehouse?
$5,000. Yes, ma'am. $5,000 per warehouse.
Is that a one-time, one-year? Is that a...
Twenty years.
For how many?
For twenty years. You're indefinite. The IRBs expire in 20 years, and those facilities will roll over to the tax rolls. And once that occurs, they're going to be paying property tax on them to the school district. Obviously, they're going to pay taxes to it, and then send us a revenue payment, revenue and lieu tax payment. So that should last 20 years, and then they'll go over to tax rolls. If we'll go to the next page, Carla. We've got one field highlighted here, and that's your SEEK funds. And one thing that you'll notice is it's projected to drop by a pretty good-sized sum. I have talked to the folks at length in Frankfurt and feel confident in that number. Now, that number's... There are factors that affect that number, too. Enrollment, you know, when we come start school next year and we get second-month ADA certified, that determines funding. And I'm using estimates at this point, but based on the calculations we've done to this point, we're estimating a drop in SEEK revenue. And it's... Again, I tell you every year, when the SEEK base remains flat, that to a lot of folks, that seems like what flat means the same amount as you got the previous year. It's not the way the SEEK formula works. The SEEK base flat for school districts means less money for us. And if we want to keep a flat budget, we have to make it up in the local tax levying. Let's see. Carla, let's go to page... We're going to go to expenses now. Get some highlights there. Page... I just find... I think you're... There. What I've done, and each one of the expenditure categories has a salary code. Your salaries in every department, that's the 0-100 codes, the top line in each of those departments. What we've done in this budget is estimate an increase of 2% across departments. And what we used, your average step that's required, that's in your salary schedule. We factored in the possibility of a cost-of-living adjustment or some other program that you might adopt that might cost the district money, whatever that might be. And we also factored in hire lag. Every year, we have people retire, and they're replaced generally by people that make less money, and we call that the hire lag. So when I do all that, I come up, my best guess is that it's going to be an increase of about 2% across the board. Does that make sense? And that's what we've done in calculating this budget. So let's go to the next page, Carla. Under... I can't... I don't think anybody that's not sitting right over by the screen can see it very well, but here we have Built Plan Operations and Maintenance. And what you'll see is the figure for fiscal '17 this year is $1,295, and I've budgeted $1,222 next year. Now, why we've done that is we're assuming energy savings as a result of the projects that are underway, and that's where you're going to be realizing those energy savings. That's a conservative investment, I believe, but I wanted to point that out, see. If you'll go to the next page. We have a very good price currently on our diesel fuel. We're paying about $1.85 a gallon for diesel fuel. That contract's going to expire in August or September, depending on when we use up all those gallons. We'll be renegotiating and coming back to you folks here in a couple of months with a proposal to renew that or to do something new. And I'm going to assume it's going to cost us a little more next year. Maybe it won't, but that's what we're assuming, and I've got $50,000 built into that line I have in the budget. The next highlighted field there, and I've lost my pointer there, is I'm going to get Tom, our Kentucky Gazette gal, there in the face, I think. But we have increased the debt, the general fund debt. And we did that because you all approved a bond issue. That's a general fund bond issue that's generating those savings. Does that make sense? So that figure has to go, because we have to make that debt thing. And then the very bottom number there, and this is the last, the end of the general fund, which is really the main focus, I think. I'm showing the contingency to be exactly what the beginning balance is. Does that make sense to everyone? So this budget reflects beginning the year with a figure, doing all of those things, and ending the year with that same figure, which ultimately is about where you want to be. If you've got a solid contingency, you want to keep that at all times. Obviously, it's a rainy day fund, call it whatever you want, but this budget reflects a beginning balance and an ending balance that equal each other. Do you have any questions on Fund One? Okay. I'm going to just skip through Fund Two. The next few pages of the budget are grants, and these are only fiscal '18 grants. The way this budget is designed, it's not super useful. We do receive grant money from the state. We receive WHAS funds. It's reflected there. We receive funds through the federal government, Title I, RBF, for preschool and special needs students. We receive Perkins money. We receive all sorts of pots money. That's all included in Fund Two. Each year, the same amount of money is budgeted to receive and expend in that same year. Obviously, those are restricted funds, and we can only spend it on the approved items for those programs. Carla, if we'll go over to page 14. Page 14 is your capital outlay funds. These are funds that you receive from the state. You get $100 per pupil, and it's to be used specifically for debt payments on bond issues. And this is $100. If you have 4,000 students ADA-wise, you get $400,000 from the state of Kentucky through the SEEK program. So we're estimating receiving $420,000 there, and we're going to... We're showing on the next page. We're just transferring that out. We've been through this grill a few times. We transfer all those funds into the debt service fund. It's an accounting measure that we're required to follow as prescribed by the Department of Education. Go to the next page, Carla. This is your building fund. This is where you receive local funds. We receive... You know, we levy taxes, and all of those taxes that we receive don't go for salaries and pencils and paper and diesel fuel and things like that. Almost $4 million of it is required to go into this fund to be used only to retire debt when we renovate buildings. In addition to that, local tax, we receive some revenue from the state as well, a total of $4.5 million. And if you add both of those funds together, it's about $5 million that we receive and have available, and can only spend it on renovations to buildings and debt payments, if that makes sense. Real quickly, the next page or the next section of the budget, page 19, is where we receive those funds, those $5 million roughly, into the debt service fund. And the next page is where we expend it. And this is probably of interest to you. Top right number there, that's your total debt payment for next year, $4,718,000. So what that tells you, that highlighted number, is what is your contingency, the revenue that you're going to receive that you don't have to spend next year, $261,864 that we will set aside. And if a roof caves in somewhere, we'll have that cash on hand to deal with that situation. Next fund is your food service fund, and I just... We have a new food service director, and we've talked a few times, and over the summer, we're going to spend a little more time on that portion of the budget. I have looked at that, and I do think currently look... It looks as if we're going to end this year about where we began, which is, again, about where we want to be. We don't want to have lunch prices that generate profit for the school district. That's not what we're about. We're projected to end the year about where we began it, and we'll be spending some more time there with Thompson, the new food service director, and I'll be spending some time on the food service budget and tightening that down when we bring that back to you in September. Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I want to mention that this is the second year that we've been on the CEP plan.
Right.
Where we've got a number of our schools that qualify as a school for free breakfast and lunch. And so one of the concerns when we entered that program, of course, is that we needed to be sure that we could sustain that over time. And so that looks pretty good so far. I realize I presented a whole lot of detail there, but for now, that's a highlight I can do a little bit.
That's a good point. I think what that... In general, what that program resulted in is more federal reimbursements for the district, but obviously, less local receipts, because in four schools, everybody eats free. So there were some children paying for their meals at those schools. Now they're free, and we get reimbursed from the federal government because of the criteria and the school as a whole qualified. I would have to turn that over to Ms. Thompson to explain that first. The bottom line is, as Dr. Or said, that seems to be going well. Last fund I'll mention here, the last fund in the tentative budget, is our childcare fund. We operate childcare services, aftercare services at about five facilities, and that generates about $600,000 a year in revenue and about $600,000 a year in expense. And we expect to end the year, again, next year, with about what we began the year with. And the goal is not to make money on those programs. It's to break even and to provide a service. That's why we do that. I'll be glad to entertain any questions anyone has about the tentative budget.
Okay. Tim, tell me... I know the federal regulations are going to leave on school lunches. Has that got any bearing to anything? Is that going to have any bearing for us?
Are you talking about the nutrition requirements?
Well, Mrs. Obama's regulating the healthy food, the healthy lunches. Will that change this school year, this coming school year?
I'm clearly not an expert on nutrition, so I would prefer to... Ms. Thompson on that.
Okay.
I'm sure there's a... I'm sure there will be an impact on us.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not exactly sure what that... You know, that... I think it's more of an impact on what's served versus the bottom line.
Okay, but it won't affect free... It won't affect our free lunch?
I don't believe there's any impact on that, to my knowledge, no. I don't think so. I don't think it's going to affect the CEP.
Probably will be cheaper for us to...
Should be. Whole grains and so forth certainly are more expensive.
More expensive, so therefore, yes, that's what I was wondering. Okay, thanks.
I'll need a motion. If you all okay with that, a motion.
Any other discussion? Okay, then I'll need a motion to approve the attached tentative budget as presented.
I'll make motions.
Mr. Vermaat made the motion. Ms. Die, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is our insurance... Selection of our insurance coverage for fiscal year '17.
We spend... I'm using round numbers in here. This is one of the larger line items in the budget, about a $450,000 line item when you add them all together. When you add them all together. We're going to start here with property liability fleet. We call this the package. It's everything but workers' comp and student accident insurance. Does everyone have that with in front of them? We've been with Liberty Mutual, formerly Indiana Insurance. I've been here 19 years. We've been with them longer than that. Obviously, we use... We interact with our insurance folks on a regular basis. I'm going to hold up. Does everybody call it up with me?
No, not yet.
All right. Go let me know when you're ready. Everybody ready? Okay. We've been with Liberty Mutual, formerly Indiana Insurance, for the package, the fleet, the liability, you know, just about it. Well, everything except student accident insurance and workers' compensation. We've been with those folks for a long time. And not that we wouldn't recommend change, because we have. We've done that recently. It's been within the last five years. We changed agents and companies and workers' comp, and last year, the year before, you all changed student accident carriers and agents. So we will come to you with a recommendation if we feel like it's in the best interest long-term of the school district, the taxpayers, the students, the staff. We do have a proposal from Commonwealth Risk Solutions and EMC Insurance this year that was less expensive than the Liberty proposal. However, we employ an insurance consultant. I'm not a licensed insurance person. I feel like I... I think this is a stretch. Hopefully not. I know more than the average person walking the street because of my position here and the work I have to put into insurance. But we, for 15 years now, utilize the services of an insurance consultant, an impartial third party, that reviews our bids, helps us draft our bid specs, to make sure we've got the proper coverage. And you have in your pocket, I think, a copy of their recommendation. Their recommendation, Keith Riley out of Far Western Kentucky, is to stay where we're at. We had a couple of other... We, we had a couple of other companies contact me about a week before the bid was due that said, "We can't compete with Liberty." So when another company comes in and gives me a price that that's that much less, my antenna goes up. My antenna goes, especially when it's someone who doesn't do personally any school business in Kentucky. And again, I want to make sure that for the long haul, the district is protected. Again, we have folks that we've been working with for a long time, and based on the consultant's recommendation, I agree with him, and my recommendation to you tonight is that you approve, spend a little more money, but to stay with the existing agent and Liberty Mutual, who has a large chunk of school business in Kentucky. And I think it's a one-motion thing, so if there's any question about that, I'll try to entertain that now. If not, we've got workers' comp and student accident to look at as well, if you'd like to look at that. Are there any questions about that recommendation?
No. So this current group is a group that has experience in school districts.
Right.
Which is definitely attractive versus someone who maybe does not have near as much experience with working in school districts.
Right.
And so sometimes, you know, maybe even though we're spending a little bit more, you know, having that coverage and knowing that we have that coverage and it's solid and is probably a good direction to go in.
You know, I know that there's a lot of commercials on TV about calling at 30 minutes and say 15% and all that. That's on someone's, in my case, old car, right? In our case, we've got a lot of liability here, and I just want to make sure that the school district, the taxpayers are protected. I will also tell you that, I've been here a while now, and there was a time when the folks at the Kentucky School Board Association's Insurance Trust was pushing their self-insurance pool pretty hard for our board members. And we know what happened with that. They went broke. And the districts that were part of it, we were not, the districts that were a part of that got a huge assessment. We still had some, even though we hadn't been a part of it for over 10 years, but we paid a whole lot less than an assessment as a result of hopefully having the foresight to get out when we did. So again, we're trying to continue with those, with good advice, and it's not really from me, it's from our insurance consultants. I'm relaying his message, and I agree with him, so.
So talking about the third-party independent consultant, what was his name again?
Keith Riley.
Yeah. So I'm assuming that one of his, he's going to pro and a con to help you through the process, one of his pros for staying with First Insurance was again, what Ms. Breen was just talking about. Was there anything else that jumped out at him? Were there differences in deductibles, pieces of coverage, maybe research that he did? Just curious if there were other things?
In his opinion, professional opinion, the law enforcement and sexualization liability from EMC was deficient, didn't measure up. And so those two lines specifically, he pointed that out to the folks at Commonwealth Risk, and they disagreed. Trust me, I've had a number of phone calls last week with all these folks, and I settled on the recommendation we did, because we pay our consultant for a reason. He's representing us. And one of the reasons why we got one is because every agent would come in and give me their spin. And again, I've been doing this a while, I think I know a little about it, but I'm still, I'm not a professional insurance agent, I'm not an expert in insurance, and I wanted one on our team, and that's our consultant.
Great, and you're doing your due diligence, which I think is exactly what we need, so I for one appreciate that.
Any other questions on that, on the property of the package? If not, we'll go to the next tabulation. Carl, workers' comp, okay. We got four, we did get four prices on workers' comp, and it's funny, you know, First Insurance Group, the folks that were recommending the package to you on gave us a price, but it's clearly out of line. That's $185,000. We're currently paying right at $120,000. You see, we have a proposal from Reading Insurance through Church Mutual for $119,350, USI $120,939.95, and Commonwealth Risk, again, $116,565.05. And our recommendation is to stay again with USI. Now, if the difference were a little greater than $3,500 or $4,500 on a district's workers' compensation pool, we would probably be recommending something else. But again, KIMI provides the lion's share of workers' comp for schools in Kentucky. They've been doing it for decades, and we just are more comfortable with that recommendation protecting your interests. So our recommendation is to stay where we're at. Again, we've changed carriers in the last few years. We're not afraid to do that, but just, I don't think we'd want to do it for $4,500.
Change prices.
Yeah, absolutely. Changing, and the workers' comp, the workers' comp coverage in Kentucky is set by statute. I mean, it's the same. You know, it's not like the package policies that are looking different. Workers' comp is workers' comp, it's essentially the same. So, you know, you're paying $4,500 more, but you get to keep the same people you've dealt with, the same processes you've dealt with, and a solid company that is in a lot of districts in Kentucky. So that's our recommendation as far as that's concerned. And if, we'll go to the next page. This one's easier than either one of those two. We're recommending to stay with Catlin Insurance and USI on our student accident, which is who you have now, but it's clearly $9,000 less expensive. Just a reminder, we do provide student accident insurance for all of our students that covers any school-sponsored activity. You know, we've provided that for many years, the board many years ago. When I got here, we just provided coverage for athletes, and many years ago, we opted to cover all students. So if a child falls off a school bus on a field trip, breaks their arm, parents have a high deductible, we cover that. And that, I think, has been a benefit to parents over the years. I think they're appreciative of it, I hope, and our recommendation is that we continue that, continue with the current carrier.
Any discussion? All right, then I'll need a motion to approve the attached insurance coverage, carriers and agents as presented.
Motion?
Ms. Dye made the motion.
Second.
Ms. Berry, second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then last on your list is the audit contract for '17.
Another item we approve each year in May for the audit that will occur this summer. They will be auditing fiscal 2017, that ends on June 30th. Where mine hit, I guess, three years ago, you approved a three-year arrangement. This is the third of those three years with Smith and Company, and the rate is $15,750 to conduct that audit, and our recommendation is that you approve that tonight. And over the next few months, if you all give us direction or try to pursue the existing auditor or someone else, we'll certainly do whatever you'd like us to do. But this is the third year of that three-year agreement that we entered into.
And the three year, it was the same, was it the same price?
$15,250, $15,500, $15,700.
The, and I'm trying to remember, I know we'll probably be going into, like you said, in the next couple nights, deciding, you know, as far as putting out another RFP to look for. Three years ago, did we get multiple responses? We just received the one response?
Yeah, I can, I'll have to go look for people that are interested in that kind of work. There's not a lot of them out there, but we can find.
Yeah.
Chris, that's, we'll do whatever you all prefer. Some districts, same auditor over and over and over and over, others change every year or every, three years or every five years?
I know in some parts of the Commonwealth that there are not people that are even interested in doing an audit for that school district. They really have to fight to try and find someone to do it. The, and you, I think you've educated us in the past, it's kind of that fine balance of consistency to where they can dig deeper after they've been there two or three years and dig into other things to look at processes and systems in place versus having a different set of eyes every now and then looking at it.
First year they did our audit, they lived with us for six weeks. They had to lose money on it. They had to lose, I don't know how they could live. The second year, they were not here as long, but they were able to dig into things they didn't get to the first year, and I would think they would tell you, they're able to do that every year, they look deeper. So you just have to decide what's more valuable to you, what's, you know, it's a trade-off. It's a balance, it's a trade-off.
All right, then I'll need a motion to approve the audit contract for, issue?
Motion.
Mr. Jack, you made the motion?
Second.
Ms. Dye, second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Next up, we're college and career readiness, and we're going to talk about our 2017/18 technology plan. Mr. Hoppe?
Before I present that, may I ask permission to present something to a student?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You should have done that earlier, that's my fault.
That's okay. We have some students who participate in STLP program, and we have students, some of those students are part of business classes and Microsoft training, and they can get certifications while in that school, Microsoft Office Specialist certifications. Some of our students went to the STLP state championship and received some of those certifications by taking a rather extensive test. But we had one student who not only took the test and passed it, but scored highest in the state. So Microsoft sent this wonderful little backpack that I don't think I could afford, and it says on it, "Microsoft Office Specialist," and Camilla Lasana. Would you come here, please? There is a plaque that goes along with it, but I think it got delivered here and didn't make it to my desk.
We, we don't often get to take pictures with this many students that help, you know, all of us, so if we could take a picture, would that be okay?
Yeah.
You can up you that list?
Okay. And while she's coming up, it's called, it's guilty. Yes. STLP is Student Technology Leadership Program, and it's a program in Kentucky that is, I don't think there's anything in any other state that compares to it. And it's a one block, very pretty.
Congratulations, that's awesome. I come from a smart. Because, hey, it's awesome. Welcome back from Maine. I'm in college in Kentucky.
Do you want us to stay in the back room? And you could talk to them.
Congratulations, Dr. Hoppe. Congratulations. guest comment. And so we do have a policy, and so any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. We should have signed and shaped.
Actually, when they state their name, we're good. Unless there's a rush that you need to organize, we'll let them do that one at a time.
Okay.
My name is Pat Reynolds. I live in 409 March Lane, first time in 2004. I have two kids in the school district, and as many of you all may or may not know, I have started an online petition to ask that our Board of Education not extend Mr. Orr's contract, which expires in 2018. Behind that, I've got over 200 supporters online, an additional 60A right here, and countless numbers of teachers who have approached me but are afraid to openly support this due to retaliation for Mr. Orr and his team. So why did I start this petition? Well, it's really, it's quite simple. Performance. There's 173 districts in the state of Kentucky, and 2015 and 16, we ranked 138 with a 66.3 as a score, which makes us a proficient school. The 60 cutoff for being proficient is 66.2, which is the next level down, and that's needs improvement. So we barely met qualifications to be a proficient school. Secondly, obviously, is the student behavior that we've been dealing with and seeing here recently at Overtucky Home Middle School. And probably most importantly, is the turnover that we're experiencing in Nelson County school systems. So in the last seven years, we have gone through now 37 principals with resignation of the Overtucky Home and Nelson County principals. 37, that's either resignations or terminations. That's 5.3 principals a year that we have gone through. I've got two nephews that attend Overtucky Home Middle School. They've gone through five teachers this year, just this year. So in my opinion, they've lost a whole year of education simply because of the transition from one teacher to the other. I also think that that has a driving factor on the behavior issues that we're seeing and the performance issues that we're seeing within our schools. This is not a negative reflection on our teachers, because we have some great teachers in our district. I think it really has to do with culture and the lack thereof, simply because we have a revolving door of five-man staff. So again, I ask that the board really consider not extending Mr. Orr's contract that expires in 2018. Thank you.
I live at 105 Sterling Court. Yesterday, I was pulled into the school and obviously seen a police officer in front of my child's school, thinking I would probably get some kind of letter from the school letting me know what was going on. I did not. I received that letter today talking about the teacher that was shoved, so to say, in the letter. I would like to read the board a Facebook post that was just posted a few minutes ago from the teacher's daughter. My mother has been a teacher in the public school systems for over 25 years. She works seven days a week, buys almost all of her own supplies, and deals with constant disrespectful kids. However, loves, however, she loves knowing that she is helping to shape the child's life. She taught me well as my brothers, and I vouch to say what an amazing teacher she really is. Yesterday, she was attacked by a student. Yes, attacked, not shoved and not pushed, not literally tackled to the ground by the student. A letter has been released saying that she was shoved and will be okay. Let me make it clear, my mother ended up in an urgent care treatment center last night and was sore and bruised today and can barely walk around. This has taken a huge toll on our family, so excuse me if I feel like the situation is being taken a little too lightly. Needless to say, the letter I had posted below does not truly reflect the actual situation. So I'm very concerned that when I receive this letter saying that this teacher was shoved and she's going to be okay, that's not truly the case according to her family. I would also like to ask the board a few questions as far as the agency that will be supplying these officers to the school. There's been a little bit of conflict, conflicting stories with that, so I would like for the board to tell me who, what agency will be supplying these officers in our schools, and if there is a definitive schedule for these officers. Also, it has been addressed that there have been many new staff members added to the school recently. I would like to know how many new staff members, because there is conflicting stories with that also. I have been told from various people that there has not been any new staff members located in the school. My child is a Dean's List student who comes home every day crying, begging me to not send her back to this school. It's unfair to her, it's unfair to the kids that go there to learn every day. As of right now, there is over a 30-person waiting list at Bardstown for these kids that are trying to get out of your school system. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe that any of you on this board has a child in the OKH school system. So with that being said, you know, how is it okay for my child to have to witness that? So, with that being said, you know, how is it okay for my child to have to witness this day in and day out while none of your children are even in the school system? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angie Williams. I live over here on Kaney Fork. I'm speaking here today on behalf of my child who is a student at OKH. In no way is she being bullied, but she is a victim, a victim of not getting the proper education that she deserves because of the daily disruptions in her classroom, cafeteria, and throughout the school. The current policy that's in effect is not working. These students need to be held accountable for their actions. Until that happens, nothing's going to change. It's also a known fact that Dr. Orr was present in the school the day the chairs were thrown in the cafeteria. Instead of dealing with the problem, dropped her head and stared into your phone. Is that the reason you've removed your son from our school? Was you worried about his safety? What about the safety of our children? What about the safety of your staff? And what I really don't understand is how you can let a teacher who has taught in this district for over 21 years, a teacher students actually had respect for leave? Why you didn't do whatever it took to keep him here with all the plans? And what are your plans to keep the other teachers from leaving? Or do you care? Well, I do care and believe it's time for a change. And I'm asking the Board members to not renew your opening contract.
Hello, my name's Lee Anderson. Until yesterday, I was employed with the district. Had several issues, worked at Horizon Academy. I've been assaulted, been hit with chairs, spit on, cussed at. If I used the words that have been used in front of me, in front of you all, or in front of police officers, I'm sure there would be an issue. I've had meetings with Ms. Brown. I had to call the state police out here last week, and as a result, I was told I'd be let go. I took this issue. I went to Mr. Rouse on several issues. This would be one issue. I was threatened by a child. I made a report to the state police because of the past, but got no result with the local authorities. I have tried to meet with you. Yesterday, I just walked right into his office. I just couldn't meet with him any other way. I've met with Ms. Brown about these issues and to no avail. This is not just isolated to OKH. It's in the district. Two weeks ago, a phone was stolen from our school. I tracked it down. There was a sheriff's deputy on the street where the phone was. I called my principal and told him, and I told him I was going to speak with it. He said he had to speak with Mr. Orr, then he called back and said that I wasn't to speak with that officer, that they spoke with the adult, not the parent. And I was to go to that house, not ask any questions, just get the phone and can return it back if I would. It's not going. I'm very capable of taking myself. I'm a grown man. But the atmosphere that's been created by the upper echelon does not give us a safe environment to work in nor teach these children. I've never seen any of one of you in that school that's only 60 feet away. Why? Are we not as important as the other schools where you visit? I've seen you maybe half a dozen times in our school. My question is this: Why are we not allowed to call the police? Why, when the school is vandalized and the kids abuse us, do you say we're not going to prosecute? I know when somebody, a staff member, a few years ago, had some material stolen from them, you forbade that person to prosecute. Why? I heard you, sir. Well, we won't argue about it because that's not what we're here for. We're here to make you accountable, as we would ask our children to be accountable.
That's right.
And you're not. I'll leave you with this. The definition of a coward is somebody that has the ability to stop something but chooses not to out of fear of retaliation. I've been fired. That's fine. I'll be okay. I'm a grown man. Maybe it's time for you to be one as well.
Hello, my name is Derek Hutchins. I know a lot of the communication here today has been about Okentucky Home. And I guess with the papers the last couple of weeks, I kind of felt to be here today to kind of say a word because my wife and I kind of ran into the same issues with our oldest daughter at Okentucky Home six years ago. And it seems like it's gotten worse over the last seven years, and we really hate to see that. But it's just not about Okentucky Home. It's about, when you look at the overall, you can look at all the numbers and the school rankings, not just Okentucky Home, but Nelson County, Bloomfield Middle, Foster Heights, I mean, 622 of 709. You know, you've got New Haven, 686 out of 709. I mean, it's, at this point, it's about leadership and numbers. And so, I'm not just here for Okentucky Home. I think as a district as a whole, we need to change. We need to change the leadership. And, you know, some of the comments that were made in the paper by Mr. Orr, you know, about it's our geographical location, it's our pay. I don't know if he just maybe misphoted that or he's just that disconnected from the community because we're ranked third in the state from a growth standpoint. And if you want to know anything about the economical growth of this county, you can call Kim Houston, and she'd be glad to give you numbers all day long on that. Previous article stated, you know, with a, you know, kind of, to me, it was pointing the blame at the principal of what was going on at Okentucky Home, and she's inexperienced. You know, she doesn't have enough experience to handle those sort of situations. She doesn't have this, she doesn't have that. Well, that all goes back to leadership. You know, she was hired by you, and you're the one that has to lead her in that direction. The environment was that bad from the get-go that she shouldn't have been hired from the get-go. Should have been someone else that had that kind of experience in that type of school system before that. You know, we have two children that we sent to Barstown. Thank God we're grandfathered in, because if not, we would have had this in the council system. You know, and if you look at the Barstown rankings, I mean, Barstown's 52 out of 173. So, what's the difference between what's going on in city schools versus here? So, today, I'm here to say we need to change the leadership, and it's up to you all to make that decision. Thanks.
My name is John Peterson, and up until about a month ago, I was a substitute teacher in this school system. Over the last two and a half to three years, as I've been sub, the conditions have gotten worse and worse and worse. When I was a teacher, I managed my discipline in my room. I very seldom had to ask for anybody to help me with discipline. And in one case, I didn't ask for his help. Mr. Orr came over and provided none. As a matter of fact, all he did was make the situation worse and made me a laughingstock among students as they talked about what had been done because I couldn't manage my discipline. Now, I ran the aim room at Okentucky Home for one year. I was not the choice of the superintendent to run that room, but I was the choice of the administrator. I ran that room with discipline and results. As a matter of fact, at the end of the school year, teachers came up to me and said, "Do not quit. Please do not quit." We are getting more work out of those students than we have ever gotten. How did I do that? With discipline, and I held them accountable. If they didn't do the work, then they got another day. And they came back, and if they didn't work that day, they got another day. And I called parents and told them exactly the situation that I was having. Mr. Orr's idea of discipline is to sweep it under the rug and make sure nobody gets me involved. Because if he does, then he's going to take their side. I have been threatened. I've been subbing at vocational school. I've been threatened. One kid told me if I had a car, I'd went over your ASSE. I had other kids throwing things against the chalkboard in the classes. And the only thing I can do is to send them to the office. That's a day at the spa. We need new leadership, people. You need to wake up.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Hendricks. I come to you tonight as a concerned parent of kids and mostly the disappointment that I find in your leadership here at Nelson County. Dr. Orr and I have known each other for three years, and I have seen absolutely no growth in this district. I'm a former professor at a collegiate level, so I think I've got a pretty good idea of how to conduct an educational classroom. I've watched Nelson County High School struggle over the last three years from exactly what they're talking about tonight. It's bullying, but it's not bullying from the classroom. It's bullying from your leaders within your Board of Education, from your directors, from your superintendent. It's absolutely appalling that that school has come so forward, but yet it's got such a long travel to go. My wife resigned last week due to the fact that she could no longer tolerate the battles that she's been fighting, which you all are not aware of, which the faculty are not aware of. But it's absolutely disgusting that you continue to have a blind side to what's taking place in this great community. I'm just, I'm just thankful that we didn't uproot our family, move to Nelson County, establish roots, because to be honest, we should have known within three years we'd be removed because that's the track record with your superintendent. You will not get qualified candidates. That school went to distinguished the second year my wife was in position. She's had exemplary reviews, but she was pretty much forced to resign, which I know he doesn't fire principals anymore. He just kind of strong-arms them. Or he uses, he uses his directors. And I cannot believe that you all cannot see this. Such a fine and great community. We, as industry leaders now, need highly educated individuals coming out of high school and trade schools. How are we going to get that? If they have such massive disciplinary problems, how am I, as a leader at a work, going to work with these students coming from vocational, coming from the classroom that are career-ready with certificates when we can't, when we can't enforce the policies that the principals put down? How do you have a student assault an assistant principal and is arrested only to have the courts contacted to put her right back in the school? You know, you can, you can put a whole bunch of sticks together, but eventually that bundle, it'll snap. And for us, I cannot take the chance of my wife working in a hostile situation, knowing there is no support from the Board of Education. It can't happen. Mr. Orr needs to go. You all need a change of leadership. And if you can't see it, I hope the community will show you what it takes.
There are a couple of questions early on. I will answer. I'm not going to answer all of them. But we've contacted Barstown Police Force to assist with the Okentucky officers. They set that schedule. That's not us, but we've asked for their assistance. The staff that's been added to the school is an additional temporary staff member, and we placed a teacher into a position that had been covered by substitute. And so, those are the staff additions that have been made. I've been in the building a lot, and I won't argue every point because that doesn't do any of us any good. But I was not in the building on the day in reference, or at least at the time it was referenced. I've heard some of that story, but that's different individuals, so. Appreciate the opportunity to answer those few things.
So, you're saying adding one teacher to the school is adding more staff members? Do you want, one teacher is going to make a difference?
And can I ask a question?
If you, if you want to speak, you need to come to the podium.
When you say that the Barstown Police know this, so has that been confirmed that the Barstown Police officers do know this?
Yes.
Because that's conflicting stories from what I've been told. I mean, I'm just asking the question.
I spoke to your sources then.
I will do that again tomorrow. Thank you.
I'm relatively new to the district. My kids moved here from Missouri. We came here with a lot of high notes. Oh, my name is Marie Neller, and I live at 110 Amory. And, you know, when we came here, it was like a new experience to any school. It was a little difficult sitting in, all that good stuff. And as the year, the two years have gone by, I've been really disappointed. My kids have been cussed at by teachers or by a coach, and nothing was done or nothing that was brought back to me after I complained. My sons come home with horrible stories. My sons are not perfect. My old niece, I've got four kids in school, and I don't get a phone call at least once a month when something is wrong. But when you accumulate all of this, and I have, I'm sitting here and I'm listening to, "This child was assaulted. This child was assaulted outside. This child had this happen. This happened to a teacher." This is a progression. This is an escalation of violence. How are we supposed to send our children to school, which is we've talked to the police? What about next year? What's going to protect my child if someone decides to escalate even more? These are issues that have to be addressed, and there has to be a plan. It can't be we contacted this person or we're talking to this person. The violence is escalating. Go to any school and ask them, "What do they do when the violence escalates?" You de-escalate, and that's not happening here. We're watching it get worse. So, next year, when our children come to school, what is the plan? Where are we going to stand on educating them to violence? Because we can say it starts at home, and it does. I tell my kids, "Don't go around whacking people." But you have my children for the majority of the day. And when I have to worry about their personal safety, that's a problem. Here is the plan. What is it going to be? What input do parents have in that? Law enforcement. Because I tell you what, if somebody assaults my child and you do nothing, you are responsible for any damage done to that child. It's district's money. Nobody wants them to get sued because that's money that comes out of our education. That's time. That's effort. That's energy. Have a plan. Be proactive. Come in next year and say, "We're going to educate our kids on bullying. We're going to educate our children on compassion and diversity." Come in and say, "We are going to take no crap from these children." Period. End of story. Because you're responsible for my child, for my four sons that go to this school. And if you can't do that, I don't know you from Peter. But if it can't be done, it has to be changed because you are protecting our children. It is not some side act. It is not anything else. That is the number one concern you guys have. It's not the budget. It's not technology. It's getting my It's getting my kid in and out of school safely. Thank you.
I appreciate the concern that you've expressed tonight, and not just tonight, but through the emails and the phone calls and the meetings, and not just myself, but others in the district have had as well. I think it's fair and reasonable to say, "What is the plan?" And I've outlined short-term plans that we'll be implementing and have been implementing for closing out the school year. One of the things that I mentioned in the notice that went today is that we'll be working with the Kentucky Center for Safe Schools. They offer their services to school districts, and we're glad to work with them. They will be able to help and be able to work directly with the schools where we're struggling with those issues the most.
So, wouldn't they, or are you doing your job?
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
You need to do your job, or you need to step down.
Well, that's, the beauty of having the Kentucky Center for Safe Schools come in is they'll work directly with the schools. So, those of you that are concerned that I'm a problem, then we'll have those folks here, and they do good work as well.
They can't do the same thing except to...
Hi. Sorry, one more person. I'm just going to say, Kristy Hutchins, 3133 Mobley Mill. And I love the idea of an outside source coming in as far as the safety plan, but you have to look at who you have now, who your teachers are, who your principals are, who are with our children eight hours a day. Like my husband mentioned earlier, we have an older daughter that's graduating this year, and my other two children, and she's gone to county since kindergarten. And my other two kids go to Bardstown, who have over an influx of kids that they can no longer take because they're leaving the county system. And I think you need to take a hard look at, as a Board, at your teachers and as the leaders that we have in each school right now, and are they willing to cooperate with Mr. Orr? Are they on Mr. Orr's plan? Are they on his same timeline? Do they think that bringing in this outside person is what needs to occur? Because it's my understanding that it's not cohesive. I don't feel that your staff members are on his side. I don't think that there's a congruence, there's not a team effort here. And if you don't have him on your side, you're not really going to get anywhere.
If I was going to bring anybody in, I'd bring in some standards of ethics, and that's what I have investigated. I think you've got bigger problems than discipline.
Do we have any other speakers?
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn then, Mr. ...
Okay. So, yes, so I make the motion to adjourn our meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Jackie, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. This meeting is adjourned. We won't be in the next session. Right.